Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the January 31st, 2024 Planning Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Shaw, will you lead us, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Beretti, roll call, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Here.
Commissioner Work?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Gomez?
Here. I'm attending virtually. My son's sale, I'm using the AB 2449. I'm attending from my home at 9611 Mount Buteras Lane, Prundell.
Thank you. Commissioner Mendoza?
Here. I'm also attending remotely pursuant to just cause procedure of AB 2449 for contagious illness at 1709 Wallace Court.
Thank you. Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts is absent. Commissioner Monsalve?
Here.
And Commissioner Daniels is absent as well. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we get the instructions for the participation in person and online, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So if you are joining by Zoom, we request that only staff and members of the commission have their videos on. That helps to save bandwidth. Members of the public should have their video turned off unless they are presenting. All meeting participants have the raise hand function at the bottom center of your screen, so attendees will be unmuted by staff when called upon by the Chair. Or we'll have the option to unmute, and then you need to click that unmute button. We do ask that everyone keep themselves muted unless you are presenting. And to mute yourself again on the platform, you push the mute button at the bottom of your, at the bottom of your screen to mute and unmute. If you're calling in by phone, you use the star six function, star six to mute, and the same to unmute. To participate during public comment on the Zoom platform, you raise your hand by opening the reactions button at the bottom of your screen and clicking the raise hand icon. If you're here in person and wish to speak, you can please fill out a speaker card or come up when the, to the podium when the public comment period is happening. If you're calling in via phone, you can raise your hand using the star nine function, and you can lower it doing the same. Please do not speak outside of the public comment period unless otherwise summoned by the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beretti. All right, now is the time set aside for any public comments for items not on today's
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Joel Panzer with Marine Rock Planning Commission Consultants. We had been at the, last before the commission in December on a tree removal matter at the Santa Lucia Preserve, and I just wanted to offer some quick comments on that process. We've got another client that wants to remove eleven trees on a heavily wooded lot up at the preserve, and staff is asking us to go through an exercise to, so they can reach a finding to demonstrate the true removals least amount, given the circumstances of the case. And we estimate that process could, with consultant fees, could be a $5,000 to $10,000. Hold on, wouldn't you know that this would happen? And let me just shut this off. I'm sorry for that. Technical error. So the, the report last month indicated that the subdivider had approval for removal of 1,450 trees for the preserve. They did a good enough job during the installation of project infrastructure that 668 trees under that use permit are left for removal. And what the county's practice has been when individuals have come back in for permits, there's a subsequent use permit that the applicant has to obtain, and it does two things. It allows the staff to do an EIR addendum to acknowledge removal on that specific lot, and it allows staff to also impose the conditions of approval for the Santa Lucia Preserve at three to one and five to one replacement ratios, and the county ordinance for tree removal is a one to one. But the point I wanted to make this morning, and I'll be brief, the environmental impact report looked at tree removal from a completely different approach. It looked at acreage of various biological communities and what that removal would be. And there were two reports to the Planning Commission, one in April 2008, and then in January 2010, went to a great level of detail on how that whole piece was structured. And it also, those two reports acknowledged that the offset for tree removal for individual applicants was twofold. It included a building envelope that was established, it was going to be impacted as assessed through the EIR. Every lot then has a conservation easement, which was the balance between, okay, you're going to develop an impact over here, but there's a complete offset on the property. And then there were 12,000 acres dedicated to perpetual open space. So what I'm, what I'm hoping to just plant the seed as these projects come forward in the preserve is if the Planning Commission consider just debiting, if in fact there's 668 trees left, and instead of having owners have to go to another time and cost effort after they've been through a homeowners association and adjust it for tree removal, now it's almost like staff is saying, well, let's try to, if you're going to take out 11 trees, 10 is better than 11, and it's kind of a numbers game. And I think the project is, is different than every other lot you see because that was built in to the overall approvals. So with that, I'll conclude my comments, and then we've got somebody from the Santa Lucia Preserve that'll just put in where the, put it into context where that property is in terms of buildout and development. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Camberd Rosey. I work for the Santa Lucia Preserve as the Design and Construction Services Administrator. And just to provide some context for the statistics of where the property buildout is, we have 297 total lots. We have 141 completed lots, and we have, I believe it's 23 in construction currently. So that puts us just over our halfway buildout point. We've been pretty successful with these projects and the tree removal. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments for items not on today's agenda? Any hands up in Zoom?
No hands up on Zoom.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Then we'll close public comment. Move on to any agenda additions, deletions, or corrections?
Good morning. Received and distributed for Agenda Item Number Five is Public Correspondence for PLN 220106, Big Sur CG Owner LLC.
Thank you. All right. Any Commissioner comments or requests? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I haven't got the microphone right yet. Number one, I note that we are putting the appointment of LUAC members on the consent agenda, and I don't have an objection to that, but I have a concern about it. My concern is that prior to using the consent agenda for this, we had a nomination normally by the LUAC liaison for that area, and that acted, to some extent in my mind, as a recommendation. Absent that, we have no information whatsoever about the proposed appointee. So if it's on the consent agenda, I would ask staff, if it would be possible to provide at least the background information that was on their application or some kind of material so that we have, it's not an arbitrary determination that we don't care for the cut of their jib, as it were, or their first name or whatever. I really would, would appreciate that. And second, based on what we've just heard, I would like staff to note that concern and advise us what's the best way to consider that. Clearly, when we have a request, it might, just the root for that might be a determination letter from the Director, it might be some sort of action at the Planning Commission, but I would like to put it on the list to, not to take action, but to determine what sort of action might be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. All right, then, we will move on to referrals and other matters. Any comments? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Deal?
Just wanted to say that I really appreciate having the matrix and would hope that staff would have time to update it. There are items in there for dates that are past, and saying something is going to occur on a date that is already passed. So that would be helpful if there were time to update that, and just simply, I think running a spell check would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. On to approval of the consent calendar. Ms. Beretti, do you want to tell us about the appointment?
So unfortunately, I do not have any background information on the, there were emails, but I did not prepare for that. Let me pause and ask the clerk if they have some background information that they might
This appointment, or this statement of interest for this appointment was sent over to District Two for consideration, and so it was Commissioners Mendoza and Commissioner Shaw. And we did receive one approval to be put on the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, thank you. I guess this would be the time that I would, after reviewing the application, and while I appreciate the community members reaching out to be part of this process and how much that's needed, unfortunately, I did find that what I think would be, her position within the county would prevent her from being, in my opinion, an unbiased person to serve on the Land Use Advisory Committee. So that was something I wanted to put out there. I do have her application in front of me.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the commission that would pull that item from the consent agenda at this time.
All right. We will pull the item. Thank you, Commissioner Deal. On to approval of the August 30th, 2023, September 13th, 2023, September 27th, 2023, November 8th, 2023, December 13th, 2023, and January 10th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Commissioner Deal?
Madam Chair, with the item pulled, I'd like to move the consent agenda once we've had a proper opportunity for any public comment. I think we have to take that as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, on the subject of approval of these minutes, is there any public comment? Any hands up in the Zoom?
There are no hands in Zoom. No hands up in Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion for the approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Commissioner Gonzalez? What's that?
Gomez, I'm line Zoom.
Thank you. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Deal, a second from Commissioner Gomez. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Monsalve?
Yes.
And we have Commissioners Roberts and Daniels who are absent.
Thank you, and the motion carries. On to scheduled matters. We have Agenda Item Five and Six requesting a continuance, so I would like to hear that continuance first. Commissioner Deal?
Just a suggestion that we might want to move a continuance on the LUAC appointment to the next meeting or sometime soon. We just left it hanging.
Thank you.
We could do it at the end. I don't think there's a time. I just put it on the list.
A point of clarification?
Commissioner Gomez?
Yeah, the LUAC appointment, I think it usually goes to the end of the agenda typically, right? In my past experience, or you could bring it back another, another day, but typically you put it at the end of the agenda, as the last item on the agenda. It'd be item, I guess. It's up to the Chair, obviously. It'll be up.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Gomez. Yeah, we'll hear it at the end of today's session. All right, wonderful. So then back to our scheduled matters, and we're going to hear the request for continuance on Agenda Item Number Five, PLN 220106, Big Sur CG Owner LLC.
Good morning, Chair Monsalve and members of the Planning Commission. Fiona Jensen with HCD Planning. I am also the project planner for PLN 220106, Big Sur CG Owner LLC. As requested by the applicant, staff is recommending the Planning Commission continue this hearing to a date uncertain to allow for additional time for the applicant to continue discussions with California Commission Coastal Staff.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Commissioner Deal?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and would also ask that in the package, I know it's big because of the Blaze part of the LUAC comments, but I also didn't find the referenced Coastal Commission letter. It may just be I couldn't find it, but if we could receive that clearly in the next meeting, it would be helpful to understand what those conversations will have been. Thank you.
All right, any Commissioner comments on the request for continuance? All right, any public comment on the request for continuance? Any hands up in the Zoom?
There's no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you. Back to the commission. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I'd like to move continuance of this item to a date uncertain as requested by the applicant.
I will second that.
All right, thank you. We've got a motion and a second by Commissioner Deal and Commissioner Getzelman. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts? Absent, sorry. Commissioner Monsalve?
Yes.
And Commissioner Daniels is also absent. Motion passes.
All right, we'll listen to the request for continuance for Agenda Item Number Six, PLN 210339, PLP Paharo LLC.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Mary Israel. I'm supervising planner, and I'm also the project planner for this project, the PLN 210339. So last week, staff and county council met with the appellant and discussed their April 24th request for reconsideration. And county's response toward the hearing, the appellant expressed a need to gather more evidence to support one of the appeal contentions, and later the appellant requested a continuance for this reason by email. Therefore, staff requests that the appellant would express their reason for continuance now and suggest whether it would be for a date certain, such as April 10th, or requesting uncertain date. I'd like to introduce the agent for the, the appeal, which is Mark Blum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for taking time to hear this this morning. I would like to request a continuance for the reasons staff stated, and as for the date, I hadn't given it too much thought yet. I'm pulling up a calendar, and April 10th looks doable to me, and I think that'll allow time to get additional title documents if available. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any Commissioner comments? Any public comments?
We do have a hand raised for Margie Kay.
We have a...
Yeah, I did. Takes a minute to get the unmute button. Thank you. I'm curious, there's usually allowed one continuance by either side of an application, the applicant or the, in this case, an appellant, and I was just curious on, is that still a common practice? I know it's up to the Chair to be able to do more. I'm just curious if, if it would be coming April 10th, if that would be, any other reasons for a continuance would be allowed? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Margie. Any other hands up?
No other hands up on Zoom.
Thank you. All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Ms. Kay asked a question that I can speak to you about past practice, and I don't, off the top of my head, remember if this is in the Planning Commission rules or not, but the past practice has been that we would allow one continuance requested by the applicant, and then, of course, if there's reason, the staff brings something forward, staff requests a continuance, or something arises in the hearing, those are not, were not regulated. So it was just the past practice of, pretty much for reasons that are, seem good to them, that we generally, almost every time, have granted a continuance. The first continuance is requested by the applicant, and that was one of the reasons why my motion clarified for the minutes that this was a continuation that was requested by the applicant. So going forward, we would know that one is already passed, and the next all have to have reasons, and staff always provides the reasons. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Any other Commissioner comments? Do we have a motion to approve or deny the request for continuance?
So moved. Commissioner Gomez? Second. Commissioner Mendoza?
To approve or deny the request for continuance?
Approve. To approve the request.
All right, we've got a motion and a second from Commissioner Gomez and Commissioner Mendoza to approve the request for continuance. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Point of clarification. Before I vote, does the motion propose to continue the item to date certain of April 10th or something else?
Date uncertain.
Thank you. In that case... In that case, I'm going to vote no.
Let's, can we take that vote again? Because we need, we had clarification of that motion. The applicant suggested a date certain of April 10th, but the motion is for a date uncertain.
Okay, let's, I withdraw my, if he's recommended, I didn't hear it very well. If you recommend a date certain, let's go with a date certain, April 10th.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gomez and Commissioner Mendoza. Do you support that?
Yes, I do. That's actually what I was supporting, and I apologize.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's retake that roll call vote with the date certain of April 10th.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yep.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Monsalve?
Yes.
And Commissioners Roberts and Daniels are absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, now we'll come back to Agenda Item Number 4, PLN 230144.
Alex, if you have my presentation, can you please share it? Thank you. Good morning, Planning Commission and Chair Monsalve. I'm Zoe Zep, and today I'll be presenting staff's report for PLN 230144, Marjick Noni with Epic Wireless LLC. Sorry, I'm trying to change this slide. Okay, there we go. The project is located on a 152-acre parcel at 26775 Old Stage Road, Gonzalez, within the Central Salinas area plan. The parcel has a zoning of farmland with a density of one unit per 40 acres. The project includes the installation of a new wireless communication facility consisting of a 95-foot-tall monopole with 15 antenna panels and remote radio heads, a standby diesel generator, and associated power and connection equipment. Sorry, I think it's slow to change slides here. Okay, next slide, please. The coverage map on the left shows the existing coverage conditions with no coverage supporting the target area, which is located on the outskirts of the city of Gonzalez. The coverage map on the right shows the coverage with the proposed monopole. The monopole would be able to offer cell service to a portion of Highway 101 between the city of Gonzalez and Chular, as well as Old Stage Road and multiple nearby residences and farms. Next slide, please. The proposed site plan is shown here. The pole will be located in the southernmost corner of the parcel and will not impact any existing row crops. The entire project will fit within a 600-square-foot area surrounded by a 6-foot-tall chain-link fence. There is an existing dirt road to access the site. A 12-foot-wide, non-exclusive AT&amp;T mobility access and utility easement will be placed over the road to allow AT&amp;T to install and maintain the facility. Next slide, please. The proposed elevations are shown here. The applicants are proposing above-ground support facilities as opposed to containing all equipment in an underground vault due to underground vaults having the propensity to flood and/or leak in addition to the presence of underground irrigation and electrical piping in the area, making the site extremely space-constrained. All equipment will be painted with non-reflective paint to avoid distracting views from travelers on Highway 101. Next slide, please. The photo simulation shown here of the proposed 95-foot monopole is from Highway 101. The pole will be painted with medium brown, non-reflective paint to better blend in with the mountainous background. The pole is located approximately 3/4 of a mile from Highway 101 and would not create an adverse visual impact. There are other telephone poles in the vicinity that can be seen from Highway 101. The monopole would be taller than these existing poles, but from a distance of 3/4 of a mile, it will blend in with the surrounding man-made environment. Next slide, please. These photos were taken during staff's site visit. The red objects represent the approximate area of the project. As you can see in the photo on the left, the location of the 40-foot-by-15-foot fenced area will be on predisturbed land and will not impact the nearby row crops. Next slide, please. The applicant considered alternative sites for the proposed communications tower, but ultimately decided the Marjick Noni property was the most suitable. Colocation is preferred. Unfortunately, there are no existing cell towers within Epic Wireless's search ring and none nearby that would meet the coverage objective. The Marjick Noni family has a parcel in the center of the search ring that has space to support the project without impacting the onsite agricultural activities. The location meets the coverage objective and has interest in landlords. Additionally, there are no environmental or visual impacts anticipated for this proposed location. Next slide, please. This project was scheduled for the Agricultural Advisory Committee meeting on November 16, 2023. Unfortunately, the meeting did not have a quorum, so it was ultimately canceled, and the project did not receive a recommendation from the AAC. The AAC guidelines do not require applicants to reschedule projects for the AAC in the events of cancellation due to a non-quorum. To ensure compliance with the Federal Communications Commission 150-day permit streamlined shot clock, the project was not rescheduled for an AAC meeting at a later date. Next slide, please. Staff recommends the Planning Commission find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15303 of the CEQA guidelines and approve a use permit to allow a new wireless comms facility at 26775 Old Stage Road in Gonzalez. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Zep. Commissioner?
Deal?
Thank you. Ms. Zep, can you tell me how the diameter of the search ring is determined and who does that?
I believe that would be the applicant determining the search ring. Possibly it's AT&amp;T. That might be a better question for the applicant, but I know they determine it based off of where there isn't cell coverage, but it is needed.
Through the Chair.
Commissioner Deal?
How big is it?
The search ring?
Yes.
I don't have the exact size, but I could go back to the slide that shows it.
And through the Chair while Ms. Zep is looking for that. In general, the search ring kind of depends on the location and the topography, depending on if there are hills that are blocking the way. The search ring could be a lot shorter, I believe, and on the valley floor. Perhaps the search ring could be a lot wider, although I am not an engineer, so that's my understanding from processing permits.
If I could follow up?
Please.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful, and I'm sure the applicant can also address that as well. My concern is that if it's arbitrarily drawn by the applicant, we then have no way to check it, and in some cases, in our past experience, I'm not speaking about this project now, we have had the ring be unnecessarily restrictive when we got further along because it, for the reasons that the applicant had chosen to make it so and drawn it so that other alternatives didn't have to be looked at. So that's why I'm concerned about whether we have any guidelines or anything in place and, as I say, I'm hoping the applicant can address this issue for this project, but I would ask that we could refer that to the subcommittee maybe for part of their list to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Any other Commissioner comments at this time? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I'm wondering if you can clarify this map that it's like the last, almost the last page or the third to last page that shows the current cell coverage versus the cell coverage that would be if they put this tower in. And I'm wondering, is this just for AT&amp;T, or is this for all carriers' coverage in that location?
I believe this is just coverage by AT&amp;T. That's what's proposed right now, but there is room available on the monopole for colocation in the future. But since we're not proposing any additional carriers on the pole right now, my guess is that this is, this was submitted by the applicant. It's proposing just, or it's showing just what they're proposing with AT&amp;T, their coverage. And to comment on the distance, it looks like it would be over a mile from the pole that it would offer service to. I know that it's about 3/4 of a mile from Highway 101, and so just looking at the location of the pole and then the distance that the coverage would extend to, it would be roughly like a mile and a quarter, maybe a mile and a half.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, thanks. So I just wanted to clarify, though, that this is not indicative of cell coverage as a whole in that area. So there could be perfectly fine cell coverage in these other areas just with different carriers. We just don't know, right?
I think maybe I misunderstood the question the first time. I am not sure if like the existing pole that's in Gonzalez and Chular, what's currently existing, who is in charge of that, if that's just AT&amp;T or if that also includes other carriers. But I meant just the, the pole is being proposed and shown. Yeah, that's probably just what's provided by AT&amp;T.
Okay, I guess, just to clarify this so that we're on the same page, that this, like where it shows that there's no coverage or there's only reliable coverage outdoors, that's just for AT&amp;T, that they're making that statement, that's not for other carriers. There could be perfectly reliable coverage in those locations. We just don't have that information, correct?
That may be another question for the applicant. It looks like the data that's provided is property of AT&amp;T, but I'm not sure if that includes everyone else's coverage as well. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments at this time? All right, let's move on to the applicant comments.
Commissioners, staff, my name is Mark Lowbaugh. I'm with Epic Wireless here representing the applicant, which is AT&amp;T. We've worked closely with staff over the better part of a year, trying to site the site in an intelligent manner, working with the Marjick Noni family to make sure that we've come up with a design that, but first and foremost, serves the needs of a communication site while meeting all the county standards and keeping the, and also working with the Marjick Noni family to site the tower and a location that makes sense for them. As stated by Chloe, the site will not impact agricultural operations at all. That was first and foremost. It will plug a significant gap in coverage in the service area for AT&amp;T, as exemplified by the propagation map that we provided. And yes, in answer to Commissioner Deal's question, the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Shaw's question, the propagation maps only show the coverage as provided by AT&amp;T, although it'd be a pretty safe assumption to state that other carriers would be similarly impacted as the position of the towers, the existing towers where other carriers are located. They're at the same location that AT&amp;T is at. So this tower will be designed for a colocation, meaning other carriers could, if they express an intrus, could co-locate on this tower. So with that said, I'll make myself available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Deal?
Back to the search ring determin, size determination question. Could you comment on that, please?
Sure. Hoping we could, can we put the, let me see, maybe the coverage map back up? So you see the, on the left is the existing coverage. Purple, I can't quite make it out, but I believe that's outdoor coverage, showing existing outdoor coverage. Green being indoor coverage, which is the gold standard of what we're trying to achieve. Vehicles passing down 101 would be considered indoor coverage. You want to be able to have the cell phone work inside your car. Purple, meaning we're not achieving that in that area between that most northern tower and the most, and the existing southern tower near the town of Gonzalez. So we're plugging that gap in coverage. There's no fast and hard information in terms of that ring. That's an approximate ring. That data is provided by AT&amp;T, and they give us a search ring, which is that ring. And in the, and the request is to find a suitable location within that ring. Many factors go into that decision. Proximity to other, you know, you're looking at a network. You're trying to make this site work with a network. So you don't want to be too close to existing towers while at the same time being in the center of it so that you can provide coverage to the area that needs it.
Thank you. Commissioner Deal?
So the area that is, could you leave that slide up, please? Thank you. So the area that's in the buff color is an area with no coverage? Is that correct? Am I reading that?
Are you saying the purple or are you saying?
No, the, I don't know what you call it, light green buff, went off to the, towards the left side of our, of our slide here. Cream, might be cream. We have green, yellow, purple, and then something else. It's the else I'm talking about.
I can't make out what that says under the legend there. Does it state? I believe that's no coverage in the, in the cream, for the cream. Does the legend address that? I'm sorry, I can't see that. Okay, so that's, you'll see how on the existing versus the proposed, the purple area starts to, you know, we get a little bit better coverage in the, in the cream-colored area. So it's improving coverage in that area. I'm sorry, I don't have a, I don't know exactly what the engineer had in mind for the cream-colored areas, but I'm going to say that's no coverage or very, very poor coverage.
Yeah, because I'm just trying to understand the reasoning here. If we're working, first off, the area around, closest to the proposed pole does not appear to be a residential area. So indoor coverage in the green seems, shall I say, I don't know, like aspirational, but I don't understand the importance of it compared to areas of no coverage on Highway 1, if that, 101, if that were the objective, it would make more sense, but it would also seem to me that that location might not be ideal. So I'm just, I, again, I'm not trying to be an engineer. I'm trying to understand the motivation for choosing this location and then confining the search area so extremely in order, because that depends on the objective. So that's kind of what I'm trying to work through in my head.
So you have, population centers are also of critical importance. You've got town of Gonzalez, lots of, lots of folks living there, lots of new rooftops coming about, planned for the future. So this is, this site is designed for existing and future use. You try to get out ahead of development and meet those communication needs before the site begins to experience severe problems. So this site will enhance coverage within the town of Gonzalez, particularly the northern portion. There's a significant amount of development that's going to occur to the east, and this will assist with that. It's also important to note that these sites will, they offload from existing portions of the network. They help that capability, and if those, if those sites to the south are offloaded to this site by not having to serve those more northern subscribers... this site by not having to serve those more northern subscribers, then those sites can function better. So it works as a network. It's not a single tower that's functioning on its own. The network is very much taken into consideration.
Thank you. I think that's very helpful. And I'm just balancing in my mind the importance when we're, when the companies, plural, are looking at coverage, how do they weight the highway with compared to residential? Because there's transient, obviously, load there, and there's a safety consideration there. It's not resident. So from my point of view, safety is really very high. And I'm wondering if safety on the highway is a high priority for, in your case, AT&amp;T?
Absolutely. It's a major consideration. In this site, this site is sort of killing two birds with one stone. We're helping mobile users along the highway, and we're also assisting the existing, you know, residential and commercial uses in the area. This site will provide, will also be, which I didn't even mention, will provide a, an area for FirstNet to, FirstNet responders use the FirstNet network, and those antennas will also be mounted on this. So that's an important upgrade. It'll have a backup generator, so when power's out, the site will still be functional for a period of time. So it's definitely an important communication upgrade.
Through the chair, if I may say, that's extremely helpful in my mind, almost determinate if the FirstNet system is making use of this tower.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Just because I don't know, and maybe others watching don't know, what is, can someone tell me what FirstNet is?
FirstNet is a dedicated band, radio band, that only serves, is dedicated to first responders, police, fire, ambulance, whatever. They're the only users that can use that. What's happened, what happened in the past is some emergency occurs, everybody picks up their cell phone and starts calling, and there's no bandwidth for anybody. Calls won't go through. This is a dedicated first responder band. Very important.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any Commissioner hands up on the Zoom?
There are no hands up on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go to, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go to public comment now. No public comment in the room. Any hands up now for public comment in the Zoom?
There's no hands up on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Back to the Commission. Do we have a motion?
If I might, through the chair, it's in District 3, I might mention here.
No, you go ahead.
I will make the motion to approve the PLN 230144.
And I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Work and Commissioner Getzelman. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Monsalve?
Yes.
And Commissioners Roberts and Daniels are absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, and all right, we're going to go back to the item pulled from the consent agenda regarding the appointment of Andrea Estrada to the North County Land Use Advisory Committee.
Yes, please, one moment.
Through the chair, I want to just explain my hesitation for everybody out so that the public can understand. It's my preference to defer to the Commissioners representing a particular district when a project comes. That's, I mean, not a statement of what I'm, what I believe. I'm hesitating on that account.
The, through the chair, I just wanted to ask, could you just explain, could we have staff provide clarification on the LuaC appointment process and also, obviously, I think at the end of the day, the appointment body is the Planning Commission, right? Just want to get clarification on that.
Correct, thank you.
If I may, through the chair, so I think on this item, so we, I think staff would recommend on this item, first of all, I want to make it clear, yes, the Planning Commission is the appointment authority for LuaC nominees. I think for this one, it would be advisable if we were to continue the item, so that we can review procedure and bring the item back, make sure that we're following proper procedure for LuaC appointments, since there's been a little bit of confusion on this one. And staff does apologize for that.
Thank you, Ms. Bredy. Commissioner Deal?
I do want to make clear that I was only concerned about the immediate process of agendizing something on the consent agenda. And that was a change from our previous practice, where we had the benefit of the Commission member representing the area that, in which the LuaC occurs, nominating the person. And so I had simply asked that if it's going to be on the consent agenda, which is, I don't have any problem with at all, it be provided with at least some background information. So it's not a question of wanting to be too concerned about the process of LuaC appointments. It's more about the process of the consent agenda, in my mind. And with, given the criticality of staffing the LuaCs, I would urge my colleagues to make a motion, should they choose to do so, to a date certain, continuing to a date certain as soon as we could, just so that we don't, we don't stop getting people, we don't disincentivize people, and they get bored from waiting.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I would agree, or wholeheartedly with Commissioner Deal, that we need to, we need to make this process as, I'd certainly say, as easy as possible for these people who are willing to put their time and effort into the LuaCs. I would also like to, I believe Commissioner Deal was in favor of going back to having the district, one of the district representatives, or one of the Commissioners in the district represented, make the recommendation, or bring that appointment forward, so that we could get, we could get from the person making the recommendation, perhaps a little background. That's what we used to get, and it certainly helped me. And then it also just would be, if they did that, of course, it would be a wholehearted endorsement for that person. So that would be my preference also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Getzelman. Commissioner Shaw?
Does the actual current, thank you, sorry, does the actual current LuaC have any input? Do they see these applications and then say, oh yeah, this is a good one, forward it? Or is it just comes straight to us?
So typically, yeah, so typically, occasionally, we will get individuals who are recommended from LuaC members, who suggest someone who might want to put their name in, but know the decision comes to the Planning Commission. It is not reviewed by the LuaC members.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes, one recommendation I would make is possibly, when we put the packet together that is sent out to the Commissioners, if we can include the statement of interest that way, or my fellow Commissioners can look at that, and I think that will actually really help them make the decision. And moving forward, if we need to appoint anybody to LuaC, possibly, we can just put them at the end of the meeting. And I think that was, that's the way we used to do it. Up until recently, we started adding them up on the consent calendar. So that's the recommendation I would like to make, if possible.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendoza.
I'm sorry. And also, if we can properly retrieve or remove the appointment to the following meeting, and that would give us the opportunity where we can actually start now and in the next packet, send it out, the statement of interest, everybody looks at it, and then at that point, we make a decision. But yeah, that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendoza. Commissioner Deal?
Just wanted to relay the District 5 process, which, when the Clerk of the Planning Commission gets an application, normally, it's forwarded to the Commissioners in this, in the fifth. I can't speak for anybody else. And the application process is also goes to the Supervisor's office. So oftentimes, the forms go out, and the forms go back to the Supervisor's office, and then to the Planning Commission. Personally, when I receive a form, you know, a statement of interest, oftentimes, it comes from the Supervisors, sometimes it comes from some planning staff. It's my personal practice to speak with the Chair of the LuaC, and my questions are usually, you know, how many people do you have from that particular neighborhood right now? To sort of, to avoid getting a concentration of LuaC members from one part of a large area. And so my, obviously, if the LuaC is not fully staffed, somebody's better than nobody. But when some of the LuaCs, I mean, there, nobody, somebody, saying to somebody, we'd rather have nobody than you, seems discouraging. And I don't believe it's true for the process. But normally, all things considered, that has been the state. If the LuaC were full, that would be a different story. If there's like otherwise as staffed as it can be, and there's like one vacancy, and everybody that we've got so far comes from neighborhood A, I might say, no, we'd really like to get somebody from neighborhood B. And then that would be something I would want to talk to the Chair of the LuaC on, because of course, we are the liaisons to our LuaCs ourselves, not staff, not anybody else. So, and I think we're actually supposed to attend one meeting a year by the rules. So just comment on what I've done in the past and the way it kind of has played out. I don't have a huge objection to the consent agenda. I don't have a huge objection to anything that other Commissioners have suggested about putting at the end of the meeting, or some other place in the meeting. I would say that the change in my mind happened because we didn't, used to have a consent agenda, and we're trying to move things along. So I think we're still seeing what the best use of that new tool is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. All right. Any other Commissioner comments? Any open comments or public comments?
There are no comments, I'm sorry.
Just, Commissioner Shaw raised an issue about her concerns about the applicant being a county employee. I'm just, that's not a restriction, right? I just want to get clarification on that one issue. County employees are allowed to serve on commissions and committees, right?
Through the chair, this is Melissa McDougall, and I wanted to inform the Commission that this interested member's statement of interest was sent to the Planning Commissioners, the liaisons of that Planning, of that LuaC, excuse me, which was Mendoza and Shaw. And that was the concern that was brought up, is that the member requesting to join the LuaC is a county employee. Staff did reach out to Council, and Council did inform us that they did not see any conflict of interest for this member, as the member works for a completely different portion of the Health Department that doesn't interact with our department. So that was Council's information, and that's why we added it to today's agenda, just because we didn't have a yes, two yeses for that. We had a maybe and a yes.
And then through the chair, this is Anna Kingo with HCD Planning, looking at the Board of Supervisors' resolution under the Land Use Advisory Committee members. There is no prohibition for county employees. It is encouraged, though, that membership include licensed or certified professionals in one or more of the following: building industry, profession, architecture, engineering, construction, planning, and building inspection.
Through the chair, Robert Brayer, Deputy County Counsel. I just wanted to clarify, staff had made a request to continue this matter, and I thought the board, or, excuse me, the Commission ought to decide that before we start talking about the substance of the application.
Thank you. All right. Any public comment regarding the continuation to a date certain? Any hands up in the Zoom?
There's no hands up on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Back to the Commission on the matter of the continuation of the appointment to our next meeting.
I was waiting for you to call on me, sorry.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. So I guess I would just make a motion to continue this item to a date certain, whenever that works for staff.
How is February 14?
Staff sees no reason we can't return on the 14th.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion. Commissioner Mendoza?
Commissioner Mendoza? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Work?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Monsalve?
Yes.
And Commissioners Roberts and Daniels are absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. And I just want to remind staff to include that statement of interest? Or is that not?
We'll review the procedures, and there's maybe some personal information on there that we may omit, so we can pull portions of it out.
Perfect, thank you. All right, then, on to department report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Commissioners. I will keep this brief today. One, I just wanted to alert the Commission that yesterday, the Board of Supervisors had on their agenda the Gerapata Creek Bridge Rails item for Caltrans, that that was an item that had been before the Commission. There had been direction to continue and bring back with an intent denied by the Board. At the request of the applicant, Caltrans, there has been a continuance to a date certain of March 26. So we will expect to see that back at the Board of Supervisors on March 26. I also wanted to just advise the Commission, last, late last year, we brought the agricultural mitigation ordinance before you. You had made a recommendation to the Board, and that item is scheduled to go to the Board on the 27th of February. So that item will be heard by the Board later next month. The other item I wanted to bring up is just in anticipation of the next meeting of the Commission on February 14. Just wanted to let the Commission know, this is the meeting where we, we are doing the evening meeting for the Nicola item, which we have been trying to get scheduled for an evening meeting. So that is now calendared with that February 14 item. Given that it's an evening meeting on a Planning Commission day, what we are proposing is the agenda that we would start the Commission meeting at 1:00 PM. So it's an afternoon session with a brief break for dinner before the 5:30 scheduled item for Nicola starts in the evening. So we thank you all for helping us get there. Please look for communications, since we will have a tight calendar, anticipate a bit of a tight calendar that day. We intend to do, look to bring in sandwiches for the Commission, so that you all don't have to leave to go get food, so we can have a brief dinner break here on site. So please just look for that communication between now and then. Other than that, just happy that we are seeing more things coming forward, to hearing and other items, and thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bredy. I have a question regarding
I have a question regarding the transition of power. When is that going to be on the calendar?
Per, per year, Commission procedures, that will come back at the February 14th meeting. That will be on that agenda. And so we would anticipate a new Chair at that time.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I'm prepared to provide a report on the 14th.
All right, wonderful. Oh, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I just have a question about the February 14th meeting as well. So I can absolutely attend for the first items, but for the Nicola item, I'll have to recuse myself, so I won't be part of that quorum. And I just wanted to, I guess, remind the relevant people that count me out of that number.
Yes, thank you. We have, we have accounted for that when, when looking at a quorum. Thank you.
All right, and on that note, meeting adjourned.